Yeah.
Okay.
All right, welcome back from lunch. We'll go ahead and continue on with our meeting. We are looking at 6.11, which we weren't able to conduct at the 11:30 hour, and it looks like we're going to continue that to February 4th at 10:00 a.m.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to conduct a motion or anything of the like when it comes to that?
If staff is just withdrawing the item, then it wouldn't be need-
We're rescheduling it to-
Then your board may take up the item itself and then continue it to that date with public comment for the continuables.
Yeah, I'll read it real quick. 6.11, consideration and discussion of the broadband implementation plan and update on broadband initiatives. And so with that, as we said, we're going to continue it to February 4th at 10:00 a.m. I'll open it up for the public in case anybody wants to discuss this or the pushing back of it. It's not seeing anybody. I'll bring it back to the board.
I move to continue this item to February 4th at 10:00 a.m.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. All right. So with that, it looks like the only one we have left is 7.2, right? 7.1, I'm sorry. Is it one or two?
We have supervisors 7.1 and 7.2.
Right. I was just going to do the committees first, 7.2. So we'll look at 7.2, consideration of chairman's recommendations or recommended 2025 committee assignments for members of the board of supervisors. And so I've received everybody's or their wish list and all of that. And I was just going to go down the list. I made a spreadsheet as well to show the interests of whoever's on. I know commonly they put this on and they let the chair choose. We, since I've been on, we've all basically kind of went down and discussed. And a lot of times customarily, certain positions require that district supervisor to be in. It's like geothermal and some others. But there's others that I know there's been interest in. And I'm, there's a couple that I'm willing to come off of so that others can be a part of. And with starting with that, I'll go to Ag Advisory Committee. I know that I'm on that currently. And I know there's interest from Supervisor Owen and Rasmussen. I know Supervisor Pyska, you're already on it, so I'm pretty sure you're going to stay. And I just wanted to see how you two wanted to address that because I'm willing to allow either one of you to be on it.
I'm good with letting Helen do that if she wants.
Thank you. Yeah, I would love to.
Okay, with that, that's who will be on that. Airport land use, obviously I figured that it would just remain with Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Rasmussen.
While I'm interested, we have not met in the past six years of my existence as a board of supervisor. I am willing to give my very busy seat away if somebody is interested. But I am still interested, and I think things are about to happen with our new Public Works Director. I know some of us have already met with them over at the airport, and so things may be getting ready to go to the ALUC.
Yeah, I remember seeing that in something he brought.
And I'm, yeah, I'd like to stay there with that since it's in district.
It's in your district, yeah. So, okay, we'll leave it that one where that's at. Area Agency on Aging. Supervisor Pyska and myself are on it with the alternate of CAO Parker. Is there anyone that wants to be on it? Because I'm willing to, if someone's itching to be on it, I don't have a problem. But if not, we can leave it the way it is? All right. Abandoned Vehicle Abatement.
So sorry.
Area Plan.
Area Planning.
Oh, sorry, I jumped the gun.
I was just curious with CAO Parker as the alternate, just, I guess, asking the question to CAO Parker if it would be best for her if there was an alternate from another board member? Is that an issue to have another alternate from a board member? I know it's not for Lafco because Lafco is kind of a special situation, but just kind of curious.
It's just always been that way, so I don't have any issues. And I don't know if the bylaws require the CAO to be on it. Just I'm not sure.
You've never had an issue?
Yeah, it was Carol was on before, so it just kind of stayed. And I think they do the same over at Mendo as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so I jumped the gun. We're Area Planning Council Transit Authority. And there's one position open, right? And so you do? And then I know that, did you show interest in that as well?
I did, but Jessica can have it.
And then, but there is an alternate, and I know that Brad, you were interested as well?
I was, yeah.
Okay, and so-
Yeah, let them have it, it's fine.
Okay, okay, and so Jessica and then Brad, you're good with the alternate?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go with that. And then we have Abandoned Vehicle Abatement Commission. Moak's position is open, and I know Supervisor Sabatier, you're still on there, and I think you're going to stay. There's also an alternate position, so I know Brad, you were interested in it?
Yeah, I mean, I can if-
Are you interested? You've got all those vehicles we just-
I am interested, but I'm good with either or, like an alternate or whatever the case may be. I know we have busy schedules, so I can fit in here and there.
But I'm happy to give that to EJ.
Okay, so you're willing to be the alternate then?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we'll go with that then.
So it'll be Bruno and EJ.
And then you'll be the alternate in case, yeah. Blue Ribbon Committee, and I seen that there's a position open, but I seen Helen and Brad are interested. And I'm willing to give that to you both to serve on that. It's good to learn, it's good to be a part of. I've done it for the time I've been on, and so, yeah, it'd be good.
Thank you.
Yeah. Caltrans, Caltrans Deal Committee?
I'm interested.
You're interested? Okay, and then, so, yeah, Moak's position is open, so I figured we'll just fill you in that. And Supervisor Pyska, you wanted to be on it as well?
How often does it meet?
Quarterly.
Quarterly? Well, yeah, there's just so much work happening in the corridor in my district.
You can take my position on that?
Okay.
Yeah.
Did we miss the Building Appeals?
Which one?
Building Appeals right before that.
It's not online just-
Building Board of Appeals?
It goes from Blue Ribbon to Caltrans.
And then Children's Councils?
Yeah.
Was after, but I-
Oh, Building and Grounds or-
No, my list says Building Board of Appeals between Blue Ribbon and Caltrans.
I think that might be an older version because I thought we gave away our Building Board of Appeals to professionals and not the board of supervisors.
So I have an older list then, sorry.
Oh, no worries. Children's Council, so it was Michael Green and Supervisor Sabatier? And you'll fill Supervisor Green's spot if whoever, I haven't seen any interest in it from anyone else, so.
I'm happy to move up if that's the case. Typically, I have not been going to those meetings. I think I've gone to maybe two in the past year. But happy to make it work. I haven't really looked at it to see if it fits always in my schedule, but I will let you know as soon as possible if it doesn't. But at this moment in time, I'm happy to move forward into the primary.
And I'm not opposed to that. I just, it wasn't in my top priorities, but-
Okay, but then Brad and, or Supervisor Rasmussen and Supervisor Sabatier. All right. And then we have Comprehensive Drought Work Group?
I'm interested.
And so Supervisor Pyska and Supervisor Green were on that before, and you can fill Supervisor Green's spot?
We haven't met. We created it a couple of years ago when we were in the drought.
So is it-
But there is drought protocols that at some point we need to work on from the state, so, just to let you know. It won't be taking up a lot of room.
All right. Next is Continuum of Care Executive Committee. Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Green was the alternate, and so you desire to remain? And then I know that Supervisor Rasmussen had some interest in it, so you can fill Supervisor Green's spot?
Yeah, all right.
And I know it says alternate, but we're treated individually the same at the Continuum of Care, so.
Yeah, I figured I would go to all meetings of it.
All right. CSAC, I think that one will remain the same, Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Pyska, the alternate, right, or is, how's that work?
That one you wanted to keep the same, Supervisor Pyska, it was the NACO one that you were looking at, okay.
All right. Disaster Council, Supervisor Sabatier is on there, and then-
I'm interested.
You're interested. I know Brad was interested as well.
No, that one is Supervisor Pyska.
Yeah, I would say, because we have a few of these where we have city representation. And so when you have city representation on a committee, it makes sense to maybe have not an incorporated supervisor. Just putting that out there.
I'm not super interested at all to join another committee at this moment in time.
Well, I was just letting Supervisor Rasmussen know because you served on it before.
Yeah, I'm okay with, if you're staying and Helen wants to be on it, I'm okay with that.
Oops.
Okay.
It just, it's more balanced.
So we have a consensus on that one? All right. Economic Mobility Leadership Network, which Supervisor Sabatier?
And I should probably rename that to what they actually renamed it, and I don't have the acronym. But I will update the admin team and let them know.
All right. Eel Russian River Commission, that is dormant, so it's been-
Happy to give that position away.
It's, it doesn't even, it hasn't met since 2019. So it basically was a prelude to the Potter Valley Project. And so Mendocino Lake, Sonoma, and Humboldt would meet together up north or-
Does it look like we might be able to-
It's dormant, so I mean, we can, someone can fill it, but we haven't met since 2019. And I don't, I don't think it's gonna, because of the whole situation with the Potter Valley Project, it's, yeah, so.
It requires a Form 700.
Yeah, it still requires that, so we still got to fill that out and send it in. So, yeah, I mean, if you want to fill it for the namesake, that's fine, Supervisor Sabatier's. Or do we just move forward on that and we're good?
Well, do we want to take, get rid of it then, or do we want to leave it on in case?
We have to because we do the 700 form still. They send it to us and because I don't know what-
It's a multi-county committee, and so unless all three counties say that the committee is gone, then we could take it off. But until then, we're still a part of that committee. It just never meets.
Yeah. So next we have Environmental Joint Services Joint Powers Authority, ESGPA. It's another conglomerate or spinoff of RCRC. Moak was the alternate. Lars is who commonly attends. And when I talked to Lars about it, commonly each county has a representative like Lars or someone of the like that is the actual attendee. But the supervisor is the backup, I guess you could say, so. You want to just fill Moak's position?
Yeah, I can do that. You skipped one though, Emergency Medical-
Oh, I did? Sorry. Oh, man, that's what I, it's already been four or five times, Bruno, and I-
That's what we're here for.
Well, I teased him that time. I said, so, yeah.
We don't sweat the small stuff, right?
Yeah. Emergency Medical Care Committee and the position that's open is Supervisor Green's and Supervisor Sabatier's been on there. I know Supervisor Rasmussen, you showed some interest on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so-
And just to let you know, it says convene as needed. It's every two months.
Okay, all right. Let's see, I did ESGPA, Financial Audit Committee. Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Green's position is open?
I'm happy to do it. I didn't have it highlighted, but-
Okay. Got it.
It's a once a year.
Okay.
Financial aid audit.
Yeah, financial audit, there we go. Fire Safe Council, I know Supervisor Pyska, you've sat on this. And then I know Helen, you've mentioned, I don't know if they have an alternate or a-
You can just attend the meetings? It's not a-
Like Brown Act or anything?
No, it's a Brown Act meeting, but there's no technical council. It's just a monthly meeting. If you come on Friday, we can talk more about it.
Okay.
All right.
So do I put it down or? Or is it just take one, a spot for it?
Yeah, it's not really in a, I mean, I don't know that it would be an official assignment, but if you want.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's exactly, that's what she said.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, it's okay. It wouldn't break the Brown Act for you to attend though because she's still, yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. Okay, First Five Commission. Supervisor Green's position is open, and I know Supervisor Sabatier is on there. You want, you're good to remain?
I'm good to remain. I enjoy the First Five Commission. I think it's important to.
All right.
I'm happy to do it unless somebody else really wanted it. All right.
We got it. The Geothermal Advisory Committee and Moak's position is open. And I know that it requires the district one, so you're, we know that you'll be the representative there. GSFA, Golden State Finance Committee, that's another RCRC committee that we do at the RCRC meetings. So it's myself and Supervisor Pyska. And then same with Golden State Connect Authority. It's just basically like three meetings that we have at RCRC, and they go through each one of those. So it's the, we'll leave those the same. Did you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question. Can we maybe just go over the RCRC right now just because it makes sense to have the exact same ones that are RCRC? I'm not looking for change. I just want to make sure that if we're going to change something, that that would have an impact. But I, I'm fine with keeping it as is, but it just makes sense to, whatever the RCRC is, is what the GFSA and the others should be.
Yeah, so Rural County Representatives of California is basically like 40 different rural county supervisors with an alternate that attend the, it's a, every other month meeting. The executive committee meets monthly. I was on the executive committee, but I resigned because there may be another committee I'll be on, which is Golden State Natural Resources, which meets less. And I wanted to give someone else the opportunity to be in that leadership position and focus here as the chair, so. But usually when you serve on RCRC, you fill the other positions as well because they're all basically umbrellaed under RCRC. So then that ESGPA is another, but Lars is, and Moak was, and it meets differently, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's what that one is, and they are all connected in that way. Another committee that, because being in RCRC, I was appointed also nationally as the Farm Ranch and Rural Communities Committee. And I represent local government and tribes, and that was appointed by the Administrator Regan. So I've been on that. I'm on that till '25, and so that's another one that meets, it meets monthly. Yeah, '25, at the end of this year, in November, yeah, so. So, yeah, that's, that's the other one that comes from there. So those are, that's what that's about, those ones. So with that, we'll move on to Group Health Insurance Committee.
I want this one.
All right, and is there, you want this one? All right, because I know Moak's position opened. Was there, there's a, okay. Then we got Hope Rising, and that's Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Pyska, and you're willing to stay on?
Can I, could I make an offer? Is it possible to look at a alternate for the Group Health Insurance Committee just in case that a supervisor who is the primary is not able to make it so that there is at least the voice of the board of supervisors there?
I can take a look and see how it was set up.
Thank you. If that's okay with everybody.
I don't mind giving up Hope Rising as the alternate. I haven't been to a meeting in years.
And to be honest with you, Hope Rising has been in flux since transitioning over and giving away Hope Center and kind of finishing the Smart Start Bright Future. I mean, I'm happy to stay on just to see because I think there is a role for Hope Rising to play. But at this moment in time, it's in a restructuring phase. Just to at least let you be aware, if you plan to be the alternate, I will go ahead and stay.
If anybody wants it.
And Hope Rising is very focused on our health metrics and changing our health outcomes for our community since we are, I believe, number 56 out of 58 in health metrics.
I could be an alternate on that if Jessica doesn't want on it.
Are there regular meetings still?
Yeah, monthly.
I have never gotten an invitation in like the last-
I apologize for not-
It's been two years since probably, you know, was the last time I got an invitation.
I apologize for not noticing.
It's all right.
All right, so we're good with that one?
Yeah.
Next is Indian Gaming Local Benefit Committee. And what this is, this probably started in 2000s. Any gaming compact that's with California, there was, when it was passed, Prop 1A, tribes were obligated to conduct a gaming agreement compact with the state. And so when you have over 349 machines, you're supposed to pay to your local government and give to specific services and whatnot. But if you have casinos with less than 349 machines, there's, it doesn't, they don't, they aren't involved in that distribution. I'm not sure if there is any that do that here. Most of the bigger tribes do that now down south. Most of the bigger tribes do that now down south. I also know there's a couple of tribes that have their own compact, I know with, I think Habemetal works with the county on on things because they have a compact that specifies that. And then now, a lot of tribes are not conducting their compact with the state, they're they're working directly with the federal government. So, so, yeah, I don't, and I'm not sure if you've all met or anything like that, but.
Every week.
But I just wanted to explain that cuz I know that it's still there and, you know. So, all right, we'll leave that be, Juvenile Justice Coordinating Committee. And I know that it said Michael Green, I know Brad, you showed some interest in this.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. You were the only one that showed interest in in replacing, so you're good.
I guess it's me. They already sent me in.
Laughco, so we have a position open from Supervisor Simon, I know Bruno was on there as well, I know that.
Be interested?
Yeah, I'm interested.
I know that.
And I was interested too.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but there is an alternate, there's a, there's a, there's two voting members, right, or is that what it is, Bruno?
Yes.
And then one alternate, so whoever wants to be the alternate or go from there.
I'll take Moak's seat.
Okay, and then alternate.
Let let Brad have it, honey.
Brad, okay. All right. Now we have Lake County Clean Water Program Management Council. I know you were interested in on water.
And very much, yes.
So you can, you can take my position on that.
And I'd be happy to swap it over if Helen wants to be the primary or Supervisor Owen wants to be primary. I'm happy to take the alternate.
All right.
Okay.
And then we have Lake County Recreation Committee, L C R A, and that is a joint powers authority that was created with the City of Lakeport and City of Clear Lake for parks, recreation and all of that. I know that it's monthly, fourth Thursday, and so I know that. I haven't seen any interest in it, I know the alternate was Moak.
I can take that if, is that, you said that's the Lake County Recreation Agency?
Yeah, it would be good if you did, because again, this is one where the cities have representation, and so the rural area.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if the people that were the supervisors for those cities were interested, I would give them.
No, because the cities have their own seats, it's a J P A with the cities. When we have that, then we try to put the rural supervisors in, so that there's representation.
But in this particular case, are are either of you interested?
And there's nothing hard and fast to say that we can't, but I think it's best to have a good diversity on there, so I'm not interested.
I just thought it would, you know.
I appreciate it.
What I can do is I'll be the alternate, so you can, you can attend. Cuz I know that they're doing, like, they're talking about a pool, right, over in, they're working on the pool. Well, they they talk about pools, right?
Talk about it at the meeting, yeah, that would actually maybe be good.
Okay, so I'm on there?
You struggle anyway with those meetings.
Yeah, I do, yeah. I do, and I, we get along, you know, we get along now, so that's.
No, you are always on Zoom.
Oh, that's right.
Conflict.
Yeah, I do.
Which meeting is it?
I don't remember, but I just know it's one, I don't know if it's R C R C or what, but, oh, no, it's it's Clogeba. I I have to try and go to the Business Association in Clear Lake Oaks and whatnot, so, yeah. But that's, that's not an actual committee, but.
Still important.
Okay.
So Helen, we'll 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 have you as the.
Perfect, got it.
All right. Board of Trustees, Library, Law Library Board of Trustees, and I think that's a chairman position.
That is a chairman position.
I know that I'll be taking that.
Thank you.
All right.
So on the chairman, that's you?
Yeah, yeah, so when when you become chair, they will, and if 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 the chair isn't, they'll let us know. Uh, let's see, yeah, they, the last time we had Supervisor Scott, they they were like, no, we need the chair, so, okay. Mental Health Advisory Board, both positions are open. This one, I think it's Michael Green, Moak were on there before, I know Brad, you showed some interest.
Yeah, I was interested in doing that.
All right, is there any other interest?
If there's no other interest, I'm definitely interested.
All right.
And happy to take the alternate.
All right. We got you. Nego, and so I know that Supervisor Sabate and Supervisor Pisca, you've been on this.
We're gonna switch.
You're gonna switch?
Happy to do it.
Okay.
The only change, I believe, I don't know, you can't be an alternate if you wanna get into the Executive Board. And also you you are the voting delegate as the representative of Lake, I see no loss in changing that. I get to continue in my vice chairship, so happy to change.
All right. North, North Coast E M S, Emergency Medical Services, and I know there's a position open.
I'm interested if nobody else wants it.
And then I know.
Yes, I was interested as well.
Let Brad have it.
Okay.
If I may, I can help. I am happy to step down from the North Coast E M S.
All right, so Supervisor Owen and Supervisor Rasmussen, there we go.
So is that an alternate position?
Mine is, yeah.
Okay.
Don't you have to travel to that one? To Humboldt?
A lot of times, they meet in Humboldt.
Trinity too, Trinity?
No, cuz it's only Delnor, Humboldt and Lake, those are the three counties.
Just my husband.
All right, so we got that one squared away, North Coast Opportunities, Supervisor Pisca, you were on that?
Yep.
All right. And it's a one-position deal, we don't?
It's a big enough board.
PEG Board of Directors, Supervisor Sabate, you've been on that?
I I am very happy to continue working under the PEG Board of Directors.
All right. Public Defender Oversight Committee, there's an opening with Supervisor Green, mind you, this group hasn't met for quite some time, neither, so.
And and without going too far into a discussion, it would be nice to see something coming back to the Board of Supervisors regarding that.
And so if there's any interest.
I'm I'm interested, like, I didn't mark it.
Okay.
When I told you, but I'm happy to do it.
All right, Supervisor Rasmussen and myself. And then we already discussed R C R C, and that that usually gets done also in November, they usually send us a document, they want us to appoint by that timeframe. But it it doesn't mean that we can't ever change it. I think something like that happened in Shasta. It's a joke. Redevelopment Successor Agency Board, Moak was on that, I, is that, does that happen a lot still, or?
They meet annually, unless there's a special project, they'll meet, you know, a few more times, but it's generally in January, the last part of January.
I can take that if you'd like.
Okay.
Yeah, mainly, I think it's about the repayments for any sales or cost of redevelopment from decades past, so you get to learn a little bit of history.
Okay.
All right, we have next Risk Reduction, Lake County Risk Reduction Authority. And I know that there's the two supervisor positions, one is for the Board of Supervisors, one is for the Watershed Protection District. I know Supervisor Pisca wanted to fill the B O S position, and so the Watershed Protection District position is open. And I know I've served on this before.
Come back.
And I I haven't seen any other interest, so I mean, if no one else is interested, I will. All right.
So Jessica goes down where Moak was?
Yeah, she goes to the board position, and I'll be the Watershed Protection District Representative, it's basically a board position, so. Sonoma Clean Power Liaison, and that's, I don't even, do they meet?
You should be talking to me.
All right. So that's, I think it's just one position, Supervisor Pisca's filled that. Then we have next Tourism Improvement District, T I D.
I'd like to do that one.
Okay, I know that Supervisor Pisca, you've been on this, and then C O Parker, I know you filled in because I I came off of it. But I I know that we had two supervisors on before, so I.
Yeah, I'm currently Vice Chair of the T I D.
Okay, but there's also alternate positions.
Yes.
Okay.
You can be the alternate, I have not been able to fit it in my schedule.
So did you want to be the leader, the alternate, then?
Well, I think it's probably best if Susan stays the lead, cuz she's the Vice Chair right now.
Oh, okay, it just was empty there.
Yeah, and you go, you'll be the alternate. And then if I can ever make it, I'll come, but I have so many conflicts with that time.
Okay, perfect.
It'll be really good for you.
Yeah, it's the Tourism Improvement District.
No, I'm excited about tourism.
Yeah, and and there won't be a Brown Act violation if I do decide to come sometime, cuz it's only one board.
And only two supervisors.
Yeah, that's what, that's what helps on another one as well. All right, so then we're good with that one. Workforce Alliance of the North Bay, Wan B, they call it, I know that Moak was on there, and then I know that.
I'll stay on it, cuz there's some things happening.
Okay, and so Supervisor Sabate.
I am definitely interested in joining.
Okay. So, so you, both of you will be on?
Yeah, I'll stay on.
All right, and then we'll go on to the next one. Cares Act, ARPA Ad Hoc Committee, and I think this goes into the, we just finished all, that's all of the.
That's done.
Yeah, yeah, but then now this one, Cares Act is done, so do we just, since it's.
ARPA's done too.
Cares Act and ARPA, do we still need to fill that or just leave it dormant and with two people representing just in case, or how does that work?
Done.
It's done.
It's, it's really done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I have a question before we finish up those. Is there something to do with the animals, like the stray animals and and dealing with that, that is a board? For?
Yes, it's under the Animal Control.
Okay.
Uh, uh, let's see where it is.
The Animal Control Advisory Board, it's not a appointment of a Board of Supervisor, it's appointments of constituents.
It's an advisory, yeah. You can attend.
Yeah. Yeah, so there, you can attend on those.
And I I know I just spoke with Director Wilkins this week on Monday. He's new to the position, has not brought them back together, but is aware that he has this advisory board and is looking to reconvene it at some time in the future, so we'll see when that happens.
Okay, so with that, we'll move on to, so with cares, it's no longer needed. I know that Community Visioning Forum Committee, that's ended as well, right, so.
It's ended?
Yeah.
Do we need to get them formally removed, we need to just do that cleanup on here?
I'll double check and see how it was set up, and come back with the board with any recommendation.
Middle Creek Restoration Committee, Supervisor Sabate and myself have been on that. So.
I'm happy to continue.
Okay.
Important work.
Okay. Potter Valley Project Ad Hoc Committee, it's been us as well on that. It's basically just meeting about FERC and whatnot, some of the issues and what. And in fact, today we'll be talking about it in closed session. So we'll talk more about it, go from there. So with that, we'll, I guess we'll continue with that. Public Health Ad Hoc Committee, and I did.
We can get rid of this one, too.
Yeah, agreed, agreed.
All right. Roadmap Task Force, which I don't know if it's called that anymore, or, I don't, I think it's come to an end right over in Clear Lake Oaks, and it's now called Copter. So.
Copter?
Yeah, and and it was passed for three years, right, so. Through, for, yeah, Roadmap Task Force was a pilot, and then now we have Copter, which is three years. And so I think they will be, we still will be meeting to discuss that, or they will, actually, from what I understand, they're gonna come to the board and report anything that they have, so.
I I feel as a pilot, it's always good to have those in-depth conversations on how things are going and what needs to be changed to make sure that we're successful. But obviously, we were so successful, we won a Challenge Award in the state of California for the Roadmap Task Force. I don't think we need to continue to have eyes on this, other than the entire board being reported to by Copter when they feel it's appropriate to do so.
All right.
The tree mortality needs to come back and be added on this list, is that gonna be soon?
Is that, is that based on the item that was moved from December seventeenth, I think it was?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring back a package of disillusions, ads, we'll do it in one staff report.
Okay.
All right. Solid Waste Management Plan Task Force, and so I I'm on it with Supervisor Sabate, I think you're the, you're the.
I don't think it's primary or alternate, I think we're both equal members.
I didn't know if anyone had an interest, I'm willing to if someone wants, but if not, I'll stay.
I'm kind of interested, but if you wanna keep Eddie.
No, you you can.
It's okay to admit you're interested in solid waste.
All right, so I'll take Eddie's spot, E J's spot. Chair of Grand Ole.
Yolo two by two, another, another deal, where we meet with Yolo about the whole situation in regard to the the water and the lake and the Ramsey. We met with them probably three years ago, right, something like that, there is an alternate position.
I'd be interested.
And, okay.
It's in my district, I believe, right?
It it affects all of us, it's near, yeah.
I wanna say the dam is in your district.
Oh, that's right.
If it keeps going all the way to the very edge, then yeah.
All right. So we're on one last page, we, okay, so these pretty much are basically Central Region Town Hall's in my district, Cobb Area's in your district, Supervisor Pisca. East Region Town Hall's in my district, Middle Town Area Town Hall's in Supervisor Owen's district. Scott's Valley Advisory Committee is in Supervisor Rasmussen's district. Then there's the Big Valley Advisory Committee, I know it's not listed, but that's both Supervisor Pisca and Supervisor Rasmussen. I probably said West Region Town Hall as well, and that's in my district. Let's see, Classification and Comp Committee.
I, I want that.
So they're both positions, or there's two positions open, so you wanted, I don't know if you said you wanted.
I was interested in it, yeah.
All right, well, then it's filled, Supervisor Pisca and Supervisor Rasmussen. And then Office Space Committee, and I know you're interested for Moak's position, is there anyone else interested?
I'm interested unless the Chair wants to stay.
No, Supervisor Rasmussen, you can have it. All right, I, did I cover all of them?
Technology Governance.
Oh, that's right, sorry, I seen the page, it is now. Technology Governance Committee, Supervisor Sabate, you're you're the guy on that, or?
We don't meet all the time, but still interested in being part of the conversation.
All right. Okay, I think that covers all of them. Do we need to, we do, so we'll, I guess we think, I think we have to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this? All right, anyone on Zoom? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board, I think we would take action on all of them, right, all right.
I move to approve all changes to the Board of Supervisors Committee appointments as stated during the dialogue that we just had.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And so I think that leaves us with calendars, right, and so I will start with Supervisor Owen.
I think I left my phone, my calendar in there, but I know I have meetings, I think, the rest of this week. And I need to get things, all the loose ends tied up here with the office and getting my cell phone and everything ready to go. I have meetings tomorrow with Clear Lake, the Russ Kramer and Flora. So Friday, I think Jessica just told me about a meeting that I'm gonna be going to on Friday. And so just getting settled in and starting the, starting the work.
All right. We'll we'll go left, Supervisor Sabate.
Uh, so tomorrow, I am meeting with Cal Fire, Fire Districts in both cities to discuss the local responsibility area fire maps that are coming out. From what I understand, I haven't actually seen the map, we're gonna be given. We're going to be given a presentation. Uh, they're just as concerning as the state responsibility area maps. Uh, and so this conversation, um, is, is, or not the conversation, but the outcome of all of this has massive, uh, potential impacts to those who have been living in the cities, who have been covered by the local responsibility areas from having huge impact on their insurance rates. And now is the time where we might start seeing the same things happening inside the city. So, um, important topic, it matches everything else that's been going out in the, uh, unincorporated. And so, um, seeing, uh, where we go with that. I know that there's an R C R C, uh, reception tomorrow. I'm hoping I might be able to make it, but I don't know if I need it to R S V P. I just have it on my calendar because, uh, Miles Menetry, uh, told me to, uh, come and show up. But, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll speak with you after the meeting, uh, Chair Crandall, and, and kind of check in on that. On Thursday, start the day off with Judge's Breakfast. C A O Parker reminded me to talk to you about Judge's Breakfast. We're going to have our Continuum of Care Pick Committee meeting in the morning. Uh, I'm going to be meeting with Director Ewing and, uh, Clear Lake Waste Solutions Executive Director, uh, Bruce McCracken. And, uh, we're going to be talking about, and this was brought up earlier, about our beverage, um, redemption sites. The fact that, uh, there are very few in Lake County. If it wasn't for tribal efforts, we'd have none. Uh, but statewide, there are entire counties that have absolutely nothing. And, uh, we've been working on a pilot program for a while between, uh, both cities, um, and our, uh, public services and, uh, getting a kind of a check-in on where we are with that to make sure that we start seeing a little bit more activity, uh, for that because people are waiting hours and hours because it's so limited on what it is that we have available. Meeting with our Community Health Needs Assessment Data Group and finishing, uh, Thursday with the Lake County Continuum of Care General Board Meeting on Friday. I am meeting, uh, with a group from the, whatever the new name is, from the Economic Leadership, um, Network, Mobility Network. It's Opportunity Atlas. One day I, I should do a presentation for the board of all the tools, um, that have been built around the Economic Mobility Leadership Network. I have shared those things with our, uh, C A O's team, uh, to make sure that they have access to these things. But there, it's interesting, uh, data that is readily available, that's been put together for easy, uh, understanding and easy finding in one website. There'll be a pick count volunteer training happening on Friday at two P M. And I will then have the Food Policy Council, which I have not seen a, uh, agenda yet, so I'll have to check in on that. On the eleventh, I'm going to be going to Memorial for the gentleman that I spoke of earlier, Philip Dean Adamson. And then back here on Monday, on Monday, um, we are planning to meet, uh, a preparatory meeting for our next Firewise Council for what we're looking to get accomplished in the Lake County Fire Protection District area, uh, just so that we, uh, have an agenda that's ready to go and, uh, just making sure we're making progress. After that, meeting with our C A O and, uh, meeting here on the fourteenth.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yeah, tomorrow I have my N A G O E E L U monthly meeting. There's an N C O check-in meeting that is on home hardening, usually gets canceled. I don't know if that's happening. I have a meeting with the constituent in the afternoon and then it looks like our B VAC meeting got canceled. Thursday, I may not make the Fire Safe Council meeting, um, but we have triple A in the afternoon. And Friday is our all-day prepare, preparedness, engagement, action, resilience meeting. That's, um, what I invited Supervisor Owen to. That is, um, with the R C D and Fire Safe Council. So that is all day from nine to five. And then Sunday is, uh, Water Baskets, um, dedication and reception at the MAC. And then Monday, I have my meeting with C A O Parker and then back on Tuesday.
All right. Vice Chair Rasmussen.
Uh, tonight I'm going to attend the Lakeport City Council meeting. Tomorrow and Friday, I have point and time count training, um, to be able to, um, work that, uh, that count on. I believe it's, uh, January twenty-third that it's set. Tomorrow, I'm also planning to attend the Local Response Area Fire Hazard Severity Map meeting with the Fire Districts down in the city of Clear Lake. And I believe we confirmed that Big Valley is canceled, uh, tomorrow, right? Yeah. Yeah. And then I have a pit or a point, again, point and time count regular meeting on Thursday morning. On Friday morning, I'm going to be at a meeting with the tribal elders at the Circle of the Native Minds in Lakeport. And I may attend the Judge's Breakfast Thursday if I can make it down there. I believe that is it for this week.
All right, so, uh, tonight I head over to Sacramento for the R C R C meeting in the morning. So we'll be, um, meeting as the board. First and foremost, we always start with the R C R C meeting, then we do Golden State Connect, Golden State Finance. So on consent tomorrow, I'll, I'll, I have resigned from the Executive Committee, which you probably remember last year, I was always going every month to the, uh, Executive Committee meeting. But, um, I'm going to see if they, uh, will appoint someone else. I know that there's another supervisor interested in it. And so that way I, because they, because some of the supervisors are retired and most of the time when you're the longstanding supervisor, they ask you to be on different positions. So they asked me to be on Golden State Natural Resources and then Golden State Finance Authority, uh, the Finance Committee. So, um, but those all, that I don't have to meet as much in Sacramento and that's another reason why I was glad to do so. So, uh, that'll be tomorrow, they're doing the installation like Supervisor Sabatier had mentioned, uh, Wednesday evening. Uh, and so then Thursday, uh, I, I will be attending a funeral and I will be in the A M. I will try to make the triple A. I know that, uh, it's in Ukiah.
No, it's here.
It's here?
Yeah.
I might be able to, if not, I'll Zoom it.
Try because it's important.
Okay, okay. And so, yeah, so that, there's that, there's something, okay, you know, that's, that's the meeting. And then I have, I'll be here at the office Friday to seal some things up here and work on, uh, some things I need to meet with some directors about or, let's see, oops. Uh, Monday is SIRF, Central Region Town Hall, it's in La Cern. Um, and then, uh, back here Tuesday. So, uh, that's, that's all we have for calendars. We'll go into closed session after this. We have, uh, eight point one has been, uh, moved or?
It's been withdrawn for the time being, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, um, I'll, I'll read it off just because, even though it's been withdrawn. Conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D two E one one potential case. Eight point two, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five nine, five four nine five six point nine D one for Project Number seventy-seven, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. And eight point three, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D one in regards to Well Path Holdings Incorporated et al. With that, we'll go into closed session and, uh, thank you for attending. And, uh, we'll come back out of closed session once we're finished and announce.
I'm going to grab my computer.
Oh, yeah, you got time. Yeah, it takes a minute because he.